All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for attending. It is 6 o'clock. It is 95 degrees outside, but it's nice and cool in here. So if you need a cool place to sit, come on down to the Holiday Bay Room. And we're going to begin as we usually do with a pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask our security manager, Ken Toler, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Again, all right, let's begin with the, let's verify our quorum.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Bill.
Here.
Director Commission. Director Doherty.
Here.
President Banblee.
Here.
Hearing by President Coram Met.
Thank you, Andrea. All right, let's also, if everyone has reviewed the minutes, is there a motion to approve our minutes from the August 6th meeting, please?
Motion.
Second.
Perfect. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right.
Hearing by the favor, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we are here is a special day, September 3rd, and it's such a special day, and both the POA Open Board Meeting and the City Council Meetings are on the same day, but we are honored to have Director Darcy Burke here from the Water District. If you'd please join us, Darcy.
Thank you, President Banblee. I'm actually going to try and make both meetings, so we'll see how fast I can run. So first, I want to start with thanking Harmony. I don't know how long you're going to still be with us, but you have just been wonderful to work with. You're professional, you're knowledgeable. Perhaps he can go and you can stay, just a suggestion. We are going to miss you terribly, and you have brought so much joy and expertise to the community. Really, you've elevated the service above self. So thank you for all you've done, and truly know you will be missed. Second, I actually had an email today from a realtor that had heard from another realtor that they thought Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District was for sale. As a municipal water district, you can't buy us. You actually own us. So the way a water district would have to, we're going to actually have to be a consolidation, and that is a public process. Should that happen? That's not happening. There's no talks of consolidation going on. I don't know where that rumor came from. The fear, obviously, was that somebody was going to buy us and then close the lake for body contact. That's always a fear. Obviously, for me, the biggest fear is we do something the state water board doesn't like, and they can pull the permit. That is a real fear, but buying us, we're owned by our customers, so that's not a fear. But I wanted to address that head-on, being that was an email that I got first thing this morning. So we are not for sale, and there are no plans to consolidate at this time. So that's that. The third thing I want to talk about, and I won't take up too much time, is there is, if you're familiar with the Bay Delta, and you've ever heard of the delta smelt, which is actually the most powerful fish in the world, it can stop those pumps. There are some biological opinions that were released a number of years ago that actually scientists have been studying and realizing that a lot of the flows that go out underneath the Golden Gate Bridge at certain times provide no benefit to the delta smelt. And that flow is, because we have to have really great names called Fall X2. It's like an algebra equation. Fall X2 is happening right now. It started September 1st, and in a wet, followed by an average wet year, they're going to release 350,000 acre feet. That's enough for 1,050,000 families. I can already tell you what that's going to mean. That's going to mean next summer draconian measures. They're going to make us ratchet down, no watering your yards, no washing your cars, no anything. So what we are doing at the Water District, Congressman Calvert has been helping us with a number of agencies. We're actually calling the Department of Water Resources, we're calling the governor, we're calling Fish and Wildlife to stop this waste of water. If conservation is truly a way of life, and this is not helping our endangered species, why are we not saving this water for a sunny day? So I'm going to leave it at that. If you want more information, please contact me. I have email addresses. I have phone numbers. I have all kinds of contact information. Tomorrow morning, Mayor Dale Welch and I will be hosting a coffee at 7:30 at the Country Club. You're all welcome to join us. I encourage you, if you have any questions or comments, we're both happy to answer them. And I'm happy to take any questions tonight.
Hi, Darcy.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good. Question for you. That water they're going to release into the bay, what are the chances of that, instead of releasing out to the ocean, to just ship it down here to help refill some of our reservoirs? Is that ever going to be an opportunity or option?
That's what we asked for, actually, because we have some capacity. And if you also recall, let's just take the Central Valley, whose mandate is to refill their groundwater basins. We have arrangements as Southern California to store a lot of our water there, because you can't move a ton of water that fast. So store it where they need it, and then let's move it when we need it. And they really have kind of turned a deaf ear. There's one person, Chuck Bowman from Fish and Wildlife, who we are told is the one that is saying, no, the water has to go. So he's really risking about 40 million people for something that the science has proven is not making any difference. And they're already releasing water. It's about 11,000 acre feet a day, which is enough for all of us for three years, every day. So I just know what's coming. Then they're going to say, oh, it's dry, it's drought, this is the worst drought ever. You guys can't use your water. We have to cut way back, which doesn't encourage better jobs to come to our region. It doesn't encourage visitors to come to Temecula to drink wine. It doesn't encourage our vintners to grow grapes that make wine, which our region depends on agri visit and visitors. So I just know that this is part of a plan to cause more emergency measures, and there's no reason for it. We have the water, we should move it, and we should store it. You're 100% right.
What was that project, what was it called again?
The project or the name of the, what they're, fall, as in the season, X2.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. So what I can do is I can put on my Burke for Water Facebook page all the email addresses and phone numbers of who you can call and ask for them to turn the pumps on. I actually did a podcast about it last week, because it's too important. It's too much water. Any other questions?
No, thank you, Darcy. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, it sounds like it's time for us to get an update from our Community Patrol.
Good evening, everybody. Before we get started, something that's not on the agenda. I've received notification from our vendor ally, Universal, that they, in their infinite wisdom, and I am very proud to say, they have promoted Zachary Wells, yeah, I said the whole name, to the chief or account manager for Canyon Lake. So congratulations, sir.
Good evening. So a couple of things I just want to go over is the monthly report from Community Patrol in regards to July. So you'll see that there was four citations issued for speeding in July, while there was eight in June. We issued 479 citations in June, but only issued 23 for parking in July. We had 17 citations issued in June for gate runners. Those are unauthorized entry, and we only issued nine in July. We had 22 citations issued for e-bike violations, and we only issued 20 in July at that time. We had seven citations issued for noise complaints, while four were issued in July. We had 14 stop sign violations in June and 59 in July that were issued. We had seven citations issued for illegal riding or towing of a boat with passengers in the boat while it's going down the street, and four citations were issued in July. We had a total of 409 calls for service in July, with 25 of those calls being unable to locate. We had 116 citations issued to guests. None were issued to service providers. 164 were issued to members. 139 total warning citations were issued for the month. We had a total of 34 speed trailer photos taken where we were able to identify the individuals. We had nine reports of vandalism in our community, 25 reports of property damage, which is typically gate armed strikes. We had 120 different miscellaneous violations that happened in the community, and we confiscated 197 passes at the gates. We spent a total of 44 minutes up at main gate with an additional officer to assist with traffic to allow easier entry into the community.
So Zach, big change in the numbers on parking. We went from 479 to 23, or a 95% reduction. So what happened? Are we getting a lot better at parking now that we know the rules, or what's going on there?
I would love to say everybody's getting better at parking, but we still had 23 other people that decided not to. What ended up happening, though, was we actually started moving away from just parking violations. We want to focus more on public safety. What we're looking at more is people that are running stop signs, not stopping for a school bus, speeding in the community, different violations that can actually cause somebody to get seriously hurt, if not even worse. Our focus is now changing to try to better the community and be safer for this community.
Well, we commend you for that. That's a good move in the right direction, so thank you for that. Any other questions, directors?
One of the things we see around here on the e-bikes is they're hiding their plates, putting them behind the reflectors, flipping them around. How are you guys handling that? How are you tracking them down?
So the way that the process works is when we cannot see your placard displayed, we're going to assume that you don't have it. You need to have it displayed. You are told that it has to be displayed for that exact reason. And when it's not displayed, you could be stopped, and it could lead to a citation in the long run.
How are you? How do you know who it is if you can't see the number? How are you catching it?
We'll go ahead and attempt to identify them. We'll go ahead and try to talk to them. We'll even try to go ahead and get to the point where, you know, maybe one person will walk up and see if we can see the tag. We do different tactics on trying to be able to identify that individual at that time. Sometimes we can just simply say, hey, you know, if you flip your tag around right now, making sure that we can leave it where we can see it, we'll call it even. And at that time, they'll actually go ahead and flip it around for us, and we'll go ahead and call it even.
I think that would be the best approach, but he's happy.
Everybody's happy.
Hey Zach, how about the e-bike reward program? I know that's been, it's a new thing for us. We've seen some good response from the community. Can you tell us how that's going?
So actually, for the month of August, we had a contest with patrol officers. What that was about wasn't about, let's get as many violations as possible. It was about promoting safety. So what ended up happening was we went ahead and we decided to see what's going to happen when we have officers that are being provided incentives to go ahead and actually promote safety. In July, we only issued 10 vouchers for safe riding in the community. But I can say in August, we issued 39, which is a 390% increase. In July, we only issued 20 citations for people riding their e-bikes and being cited for the violation. However, though, in August, we did find 31 people in violation. With that being said, we did see an increase from our patrol officers promoting safety during this time because of the contest, but also as well because they want to go ahead and make sure people are being safe.
Good work. This is all indicating movement in the right direction. So again, thanks to you and the staff for doing a great job on that. I think that's it. Thank you, Zach, and Ken. All right. Next, it is my honor to talk about the Member of the Month. Rhea Riley, she's trying to hide in the back, because she's, she likes to be, she's not an outward, doesn't like outward praise and that, but she is so deserving of it. Some background on Rhea. Rhea was born and raised in Algeria. She has four brothers. She graduated at 16, and she went into the military with the Foreign Legion. She served in the anti-terrorism unit for eight years, so she is a validated badass. She is fluent in several languages. She has a master's degree from Sarban, a university in Paris. She came to the US and Canyon Lake in 2007, and she immediately started serving our community. She is the owner of the sports stop. She did a dinner, she's been the owner of the sports stop since 2016, or rather. She is the, she actively supports the community in many, many ways. She supports the Oktoberfest. She supports the Parade of Frights, the Holiday Boat Parade, many of our activities. So she's a very active member of our community, the golf tournaments. Last month, she donated and sponsored a taco dinner at the senior center for 75 members of the community. To add to that, this month, she's doing it again, a repeat performance, but she'll be doing it for the senior center at the end of September for a spaghetti dinner. And so she's done nothing, just she continues to give and give. She has received the Jordan Aaron Cran Spirit Award from the city last year, and she is so deserving of our Member of the Month. And so, Rhea, would you please come up and accept us? All right, and next, we have Eric Kazakov, our general manager, is going to present the Employee of the Quarter.
Why is it not working? Hello. Oh, it's working. After seven years, I figured out how to use the microphone, apparently. So every quarter, we accept nominations from our 200 employees for an Employee of the Quarter. And I'm proud to say that Jose Montano is, did I say that right? Is our Employee of the Quarter. Jose, please come up. Jose's been here for about two and a half years and is an esteemed member of our Activities Department and our Recreation Manager. And I think the board should stand up again.
All right, next. Well, it wouldn't be a board meeting if I didn't go off script at least once, so let me go again. I do have an announcement to make to the community. And that is, one of the things that happened in the last month is we recompeted our insurance. And we found out that our prior insurance carrier, Philadelphia, would no longer cover us because of all the changes that are going on in the state of California. So we recompeted it, and I want to give everyone a heads up. We'll give you the details as they come out. But our insurance premiums are going up by over 43%. Yeah, I know we're seeing it as homeowners. We're seeing it in our cars. We're seeing it in our houses. As an association, we're seeing it as well, and we're in the middle of figuring out how to address that. But costs and insurance in particular are a significant issue in the community. And one of the things in particular, in addition to the premiums going up, the coverage is, are changing. So you're getting, we're spending more for a little bit less, but it's the nature of what's going on. Another thing that we need to know is, is our new carrier has explicitly said that the clubs, all the club activities are not covered in our overall POA insurance. So we will be having a meeting, coming up with the club presidents and so forth to notify them. But we just want to give you a heads up. This is all pretty fresh breaking news. As it comes up, we want to make you aware that this is a challenge that the board and the association are dealing with in real time. All right, so are there any member comments?
Yes, I just have one. Alyssa DiCaprias.
Bill, if I could clarify really quickly on the clubs. Clubs were never specifically covered under our previous carrier, Philadelphia's insurance. It's notable that our new carrier has said specifically, without asking, no club activity is discovered. And so it's not a huge change, because technically, clubs were not covered under our liability insurance before. We've always, as a company, suggested that clubs get their own insurance. It's notable and worth talking about in public, because this carrier specifically wrote down that we don't cover anything that clubs are doing. And so we will be having some conversation about that, but it's not a huge change.
Thanks for that clarification, Eric. Alyssa, welcome.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Alyssa DiCaprias, 3846294. You think I've memorized that already? Harmony, I wish you the very best in New York. I know you'll enjoy it, except the snow. I'm very happy to hear about the voucher program working out. That's a big deal to me, to let the kids know that we are giving them something good for doing good. I am a little disappointed in what happened this evening when I came in. We had dinner at the Country Club. We came in about a quarter to six. We came through the center lane of the main gate. The person in front of us took out their pass. It was scanned, and they left. There was no other identification. As far as I could tell, they went through faster than we did with our RFID, and we were behind them. So I'm a little concerned about that, when we have issues of theft and vandalism, that we're just scanning a pass and not checking for other ID. And that's what I came up to tell you.
Well, thank you for the input. We have the appropriate people here to take that feedback as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's move into the agenda then. So I'm actually going to recommend, I'm going to request that we pull Item C from the Consent Agenda, which has to do with the Reserve Funds Transfer. Just because it being a financial item, I think the board should vote on it separately. So is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B, which is the financial statements and the report of the executive session?
Approve, we approve Consent Agenda's Item A and B.
One motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the Consent Agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing by in favor, A and B approved.
Thank you. All right, then if we could ask our controller, Susan Daywood, if you'd please come up and tell us about the Reserve Fund Transfer.
Good evening. Civil Code Section 5502 provides that transfers of greater than $10,000 shall not be authorized from the association's reserve or operating accounts without prior written board approval. We have tax payments that are due mainly from the sale of the fire station this year. We owe the Franchise Tax Board $70,449 and Internal Revenue Service $174,441. In addition to the current year taxes, we have estimated tax coupons provided to us for the tax that we will, that is estimated we will owe in 2025. And we owe the Franchise Tax Board three estimated tax coupons, $12,567 on two occasions, and $16,756 on one quarter. And for the Internal Revenue Service, we need to make four estimated tax payments of $8,085 each. In compliance with Civil Code 5502 and prudent fiscal management, it is recommended that the tax payments be approved for release to the taxing authorities.
Thank you, Susan. Since we, let's see, is there a motion to, I'll make a motion that we approve the fund transfer. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, since there, since it's a financial item, it's our normal practice when it's a financial matter, we do a roll call. If we can do a roll call vote on that?
Okay, Director Cook?
Yes.
Director Bill?
Yes.
Director Commission?
Yes.
Director Doherty?
Yes.
President Banblee?
Yes.
Hearing by the favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Susan. But since you're here, why don't we talk about Finance Committee members?
I'm happy to talk about the Finance Committee members. The Finance Committee has an opening for two alternate committee members. The Finance Committee has the following recommendations for those positions. Craig Brackett and Kent Skidmore. Skidmore. The board, the recommendation is that the board accept the above changes and elections of the Finance Committee effective immediately.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Great. Any member comments? Sorry, wait, we took it first and a second, yeah, for a second. Any member comments on the Finance Committee nominations as alternates? No? Board members, questions, comments, discussion? I have one. They both have excellent business backgrounds. That looks very good. They're both alternate positions. Is there a first and a second?
Yes. And I'm sorry I did not put that on here. I'll have to, I'll have to let you know what's, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay, so what I heard is Kent Skidmore is first alternate. Craig is second. Okay. All right, all in favor of approving the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Are there?
Aye.
Opposed? Maybe late, but not opposed.
Hearing by in favor, motion carries.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right. So our main star tonight is Tiffany Krips, who's going to talk to us about a bunch of work they've been doing on the Rules Committee.
Good evening. So like President Banblee said, I'm going to be with you guys for a minute. Our first rule is General Rules 2.0 guest usage. The Rules and Regulations Review Committee reviewed a proposed modification to General Rule 2.0, guest usage of common areas and amenities. Originally, it was suggested by the Security Advisory Committee. The modification seeks to expand the scope of the existing 10 specific rules to encompass the entire GR 2.0 section, so that would be GR 2.0 to GR 2.2, 2.23. This change would provide the Canyon Lake POA with broader authority to hold members accountable for the actions of their guests. It is recommended that the Board of Directors approve the 28-day reading, as it was presented today, to revise GR 2.0.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it. Okay, member comments? No? Board comments or questions or discussion? Board comments or questions or discussion? I guess I'd like to clarify a couple of things. So we're not, this is, the purpose of this is to consolidate the pages and the volumes and volumes of rules.
This rule is not part of that. This rule is a different rule. We received an email from the Security Advisory Committee. Essentially, two point O, as it currently reads, has about ten different rules that it applies to, and we're suggesting that it applies to all of the two point two set, or two point O to two point two-three.
Got it. Okay, so it doesn't say we're not, we're striking malicious mischief or fireworks or stuff like that, just.
Nope. We're just adding to it.
Thank you for the clarification. Any others? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Perfect.
Okay, so our next rule is two point one three, no smoking. The Rules and Regulations Review Committee was tasked with reviewing the current rules and regulations and making recommendations to streamline the document. Their objective is to create a cohesive and comprehensive set of rules that are easier to understand and enforce. This action item specifically focuses on refining and enhancing the existing rules and regulations to reduce redundancy and ensure clarity and effectiveness across all rule sections. The committee proposes revising general rules two point one three, no smoking, to consolidate all of our smoking rules into one single comprehensive rule covering all areas. It's recommended that the Board of Directors approve the twenty-eight day reading as it was presented to revise GR two point one three, no smoking.
Motion to approve this twenty-eight day reading.
Motion.
I heard a first and a second on that one. First second. Member comments? Come on forward.
Is it working? Good. Dan LeCoeur, and I didn't get a chance to read the rule, but does it include vaping?
We didn't add vaping to this one. So right now we're just trying to consolidate the rules and our next plan is to kind of go in and make sure the rules are all consistent with our practices today. So right now we're just trying to take them. We had the smoking rule and.
I want to consider that as an opportunity while you're changing this rule to incorporate vaping.
Yeah, I think the committees discussed that, so I think we will be considering that.
That's it.
Dan, Dan, just to qualify, just say a little more on that. We have a hundred and seventy-two pages of rules. So as we're going through this, and we'll be going through this a couple of board meetings, it says no smoking at virtually every single amenity versus pickleball, tennis, golf field, everywhere. So we're trying to consolidate into one general rule. Just, we're trying to get this rules document to something that somebody actually wants to pick up and read through. So we agree, we purposely told the committee that we didn't want to change the rules at this point in time because we didn't want to muddy the waters as we go through this process. The next round, we'll be going back and looking at every rule and seeing where they need to change. But your feedback is greatly appreciated on that.
Directors, any comments, questions? All right, all in favor of approving the twenty-eight day reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Okay, our next rule is GR four point four and general rules four point four and Lighthouse Restaurant two point eight. This is on the same breath as the other rule and condensing our rules into one singular rule. The committee proposes combining general rules four point four H. Fishing is prohibited on Main North Treasure Island causeways and common docks with Lighthouse Restaurant two point eight, no fishing allowed. It's recommended that the Board of Directors approve the twenty-eight day reading as it was presented to revise GR two, oh, there's a typo on that. Or on mine. It should be to revise GR four point four H and LR two point eight.
We have a motion.
So moved.
I'll second it. Member comments? No fishing. All right. Director comments?
Does this include Sunset Beach?
The original rules didn't have Sunset Beach in them. So the original rules just had the Main North Treasure Island causeways, and then we're putting the Lighthouse Restaurant into this one. So it says lodge premises or landings.
So we're basically talking the walkway around the lighthouse and rental docks too, or no?
I don't even know if it would incorporate rental docks. It doesn't, I mean, it says premises, so.
Yeah, I was just looking for clarification. That's because what that entails. We're going to make you come up every time you have to comment.
I'd be a fan of keeping fishing on the docks. I see a lot of kids not getting into trouble fishing on those docks. That's my comment.
Thank you.
We could look at further refining the rule too, to specify in the future, maybe.
Okay.
Because it does, it is kind of generic right now.
The primary objective is consolidation and consistency, right? Okay. Any other comments? All in favor of approving this twenty-eight day reading, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Okay, so our next one's kind of a big one. It's the restaurant rules. So this consolidation combines the Lighthouse Restaurant rules with the country, country club rules. We're recommending removing the no smoking rule that was in both sections, the no loitering rule and the no fishing allowed rule and the responsibility for damages rule, because these are all covered in the general rules. And so other than that, there's no specific changes to the, the rules. They're just combined. And it's recommended that the Board of Directors approve the twenty-eight day reading as it was presented to combine the country club and lighthouse sections into one section titled restaurant rules.
How about a motion for that one?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Member comments? No member comments, board comments or questions? Yeah, for a job.
Yeah, Tiffany, I, looking through this, I see it reference, a number of rules reference just the lodge. Like all golf carts, all golf carts at the lodge must be parked and designated vehicle parking spaces only. And why wouldn't that just be a general statement? Instead, why would it identify the lodge only?
So to go back to Alex's statement, the goal right now isn't to actually change the rules. It's just to simplify them. So we're going to be going back into each section and seeing if we need to expand it or if we need to further refine it.
Okay. All right, well, just for notification that there's a number of places where references one or the other.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, they had a few rules that were specific to the lodge, so we just kept them in there. And the same with the dress code. So the dress code is different at each facility, so we put it in there twice and referenced which one.
Okay, I have a question on, on section, we are striking section CC two point six, which is responsibility for damages. I think that's for the country club, but we're not striking the one under the lodge, which is CC, where is it? LR five point five. No, that's removal. Anyway, it was on here. Oh, sorry, there it is, LR five point six. Now I was curious why we're just striking that one in one place, but not the other.
We should have been striking it in both on the cover page. I have them struck on both.
Okay. Okay, so that LR five point six should be.
Yeah, it should be, that one should be redlined.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions? All right. All in favor of approving this twenty-eight day reading as amended? Say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Okay, this is my last one for a second. So the committee proposes revising GR two point one zero, no damage to CLPOA property to hold both members and banquet customers accountable to any damages to CLPOA property. This change will enable the removal of the redundant rule pertaining to damages currently found in the restaurant section of the rules. It's recommended that the Board of Directors approve the twenty-eight day reading as it was presented to revise GR two point one zero, no damage to CLPOA property.
There a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, three of them. Great. Any member comments on this or questions? No? Board directors?
Just Tiffany, I don't know if you noticed, just tonight, how many pages of rules did we eliminate from our rulebook? What do you think?
The restaurant rules alone, probably combining those, were probably at least fifteen pages. Yeah.
Thank you.
Good call. I feel lighter already.
Just for the record, the next step as we go through these rules and we're, obviously we're going to touch them and stuff like that. I think we're going to start pulling policy out in the rules and have a policy book versus a rules book, because there's just a lot of policies in our rules document that doesn't need to be really in there. They're just policies on how to do things. So we're going to separate those out and that'll make it much more simplistic for our community to actually understand the rules, for community patrol to find the rules. And so when they do want to cite somebody and stuff, they'll just simplify the whole process.
I know this has been a big labor, a big effort for our Rules Committee. I did have one question. And it's under GR two point, the proposed rule, it says the prime member or client will be responsible for, for all charges associated with the damages. Can you clarify what is meant by that?
So I think we had client in the restaurant sections because we were referring. So over at the country club, I believe, you don't have to be a member necessarily to reserve the facility. So this is to accommodate that.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving this twenty-eight day reading, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. That was easy.
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Tiffany. We appreciate it. I know it's been a big effort for you and the, and the Rules Committee. And good work on, on the committee's part to, to go. It's been months, right, that they've been working on that?
I think it's probably been a year and a half.
Year and a half, yeah.
It's taken a lot of staff hours too.
Right.
Lot of, lot of little intricacies that we tried not to get bogged down to, but the goal was to reduce the document itself in size.
Yeah, great work. Thank you. Hello, Cheryl.
Good evening. So for tonight, we are bringing back PC four point one nine, property maintenance required for a twenty-eight day reading. We are revising, it's an attempt to some, stop some unnecessary storage. So the only changes that we're actually making are going to be the addition of vehicle parts and then business will be added to it. And then from there, it'll state long-term storage and any item not regularly used. And this will help, hopefully help, so there's not a whole lot of storage of multiple items. And it's to tell them, there's no other changes to the fines. And we're basically stating that it's recommended that the Board of Directors approve the rule revision for PC four point nine property maintenance for a twenty-eight day reading as submitted.
Thank you, Cheryl. Do we have a motion to approve this twenty-eight day reading?
Motion.
Second.
Member comments? Come on, come on, Bill.
Hi, Bill Medd, but I have a question. If I use my trailer twice a year to get my boat in and out, does that come under in frequent use?
It does not include your trailer.
Thank you.
Any other member comments? Board directors? No? So that also goes like RVs and things like that, doesn't include?
Yeah, it does not include that.
That kind of thing. Right. Stuff you might store on your, what is it, what does it include? Is a question.
So if you were to have a whole bunch of stacked items in the backyard, even if they're covered with a tarp, you know, if it's visible from the neighboring property or if it's invisible from the lake or the street or even golf course, that's not allowed. So we would want you to put that in a regularly stored area and not store it on the property where it's visible.
Quick question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Cheryl? I have a gazebo in the backyard, visible from the water. And we have table and chairs, and I stack the chairs, put a cover on them in the gazebo. Is that, it, it's an area where the tables and chairs typically sit.
It does not include that. We're talking about excessive storage.
Excessive, okay. Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate it. All in favor of approving this twenty-eight day reading, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
All right, that's one, two, three, four, five, six twenty-eight day readings. If any members have any questions, this is the, the month where you can, you can review it, send us your feedback. They will be voted on at the, at the October meeting. So now let's talk about some rules that we are voting on. Steve?
Good evening. This is for approval of Happy Camp revised rules two point two and five point one. Last month, the Board of Directors heard the twenty-eight day reading and I'm here for approval. Is there anything you'd like me to go over?
I just want to just refresh us on what the rule was.
So mainly the rules are, because of our new online reservation system, was to update the rules so they matched what you could and how you made reservations.
Perfect. Any, is there a first, a motion on to, to approve this rule?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Perfect. Member comments, questions? No? Director? Comments, questions? No? All in favor of approving the new Happy Camp or revised Happy Camp rules, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And Tiffany, one more time.
Hello again. The Board of Directors requested that legal review GR two point nine as attached. Legal made the following recommend, recommended edits to rule two point nine malicious mischief as shown in the redline version. The Board of Directors approved legal's recommended edits. It is recommended that the Board of Directors approve to revise GR two point nine as attached.
I'll make a motion. Is there a second for this one?
Second.
Any member comments on this or questions? None? Directors, comments, questions? It's all pretty straightforward. We discussed it last time. It's, it's to make it more encompassing. So there's no question. All in favor of approving this rule, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. All right, we're going to start off with board liaison committee reports, so.
Alex?
A pretty simple one tonight. You guys have already seen it. The Rules Committee is a committee that I've overseen for the last two years. We're starting to start seeing some of the work that they've put in tonight is finally coming to the board to get the rules document to be a, a smaller document to be more easy. That's pretty much what we've been working on for the last, I would say eighteen months. So I'm really happy to see that it's getting done and we're finishing up. So that's pretty much it for the committees that I sat on last month. I also sit on the Appeals Committee, but not much to announce or talk about that one.
Thanks, Alex.
Greg. The rejuvenated Recreation Committee with our two new members recently approved by the Board met a couple of weeks ago. And I'm happy to report that they sent for approval to the General Manager, not one, not two, but three little projects that we voted on and think will be a real, real assets to the community and our facility. So again, they're not huge projects. One of them's actually quite small, but a project is a project. So we made some good progress with a, kind of like I said, like a rejuvenated group, and we hope to do more of that going forward. Oh, and I, I'd tell you what they were, but they haven't been approved yet, so I probably shouldn't.
Jeff?
Just a little bit here with the FPC, Facilities Planning Commission.
Uh, just a little bit here with the FPC, uh, facilities planning commission, committee. That's our, can't talk today. We are working on a revised motorcycle lot parking um, area. The uh, with fenced in and um, other options that we haven't decided on yet. The um, we're also looking at the parking on the corners, blind corners in some areas. It's kind of dangerous. It's uh, people are parking trucks and RVs and blocking the view of other people coming out of the intersections. And we've had some close calls there. Those are really the primary things. There's a bunch of other little things going on, but they're in motion still.
Thank you, Jeff. Joe?
Yeah. I'm uh, going to report on the green committee. Excuse me. They meet on the second Thursday uh, of the month, one o'clock in the Magnolia room. It's an open meeting. Everyone's welcome to come. The room seats of, I don't know, 70 people. So come on down. They're currently researching bunker uh, repair bunker design. Uh, it's been beyond the useful life of the bunkers and uh, looking to get it, get a good design on those and possibly upgrading those. They're also researching camera, security cameras, additional ones on the golf course. We have some currently and uh, we want to see if we can improve on that coverage. The golf course is going to be closed for overseeding from October 14th through November 3rd. It's uh, about a week and a half, two weeks later than, than usual. And uh, so just want you to know those dates, October 14th and November 3rd. During that period, about a week, the restaurant will be closed also, and I don't have those exact dates, but um, just check the newsletter for that information. Tuesday work group is still on their summer break, uh, except for their sand crew, which has diligently been going out every Tuesday. And sanding divots, a group of about four or five guys that are devoted to that. And we're very appreciative of that, their efforts on that. And um, they will be there, they'll be back to work in October. So they're a great group of guys and do wonderful things for the golf course. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. And then I sit on uh, the um, the security advisory committee, they meet the second Monday of the month. So next Monday, they'll be meeting again. They, they've been talking about uh, the, the increased in performance on the uh, on the e-bike reward program. So that's uh, that's good. There's 59 rewards issued through last month. If you talk about what's going on next, that's almost 80, which is outstanding. Ninety-three people uh, in the community have registered on the security camera program. So you, if you are interested and you have a camera or would like a camera, you could be that lucky 100th member. And we'll give you a free sign with it. So that's uh, that's what's going on with them. Also on the senior working group, uh, and it's a great uh, group of individuals that at the senior center there, um, they have their, their spaghetti dinner, their potluck is spaghetti dinner catered by Ria and the sports stop uh, at the end of the month. Uh, the last, I think it's Saturday or Sunday. I forget which uh, of the month. They're also getting prepared for their, their big event that they hold every year is their holiday boutique. It is scheduled for November 9th and 10th. And if anyone is a crafter, they are, they're calling all crafters uh, to, to come and um, and sign up for the uh, for the boutique. So that's what's happening on the uh, committee reports. So Eric, how about uh? How about the association?
I don't know why I'm trying to press the green button for the first time. Like all of a sudden I forgot how to use this. Uh, thank you all for coming. I know everybody's busy in the summer, but it's nice to see the some regulars here. As usual, I like to direct people to the staff reports in our published agenda. Our staff takes a lot of time writing all that information down and um, presenting it to us and the board. And we, I encourage um, the members at large to take a look at that information. Uh, some quick highlights uh, from activities, uh, the pool fall schedule starts September 2nd. And um, just an interesting factoid in Octo, in August, uh, 6,662 people uh, visited our pool. I know, right? Maui Sunday was, uh, I didn't make it there yesterday. I got sidetracked in big projects, but so yesterday, day before, I guess. Day before, yeah. I, my weekend was a blur. Um, I hear it was great. So thank you to everybody that made that happen. And I want to say that September 21st is Harbor Fest put on by the Fine Arts Guild. And uh, that's a basically a boat in concert, should be a good time. Uh, Chase Beckham tickets are still available here in the Holiday Bay Room. I think that's November. I meant to look the date up. Um, and I also want to say that um, we're going to miss Harmony. Um, we'll make a bit, much bigger deal next month. She gets one more board meeting, so we'll torture her some more next month, but we're definitely going to miss her. She's been a fixture around this place. I've learned a lot from her and uh, a very valued employee and we wish her the best. And um, it's going to be a really exciting time for her family. And um, there'll be a void here for sure, but uh, new adventures. So we're excited for you. Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Eric. All right, this is uh, board, parting board comments. So Jeff, let's start on this end with you.
Well, I'd like to elaborate a little bit on uh, what Joe said with the Tuesday work group. Uh, I've said this before and uh, I, I hope this is going out online to uh, some of the people there, but these guys will teach you how to do these things. If uh, you got a young kid that needs to learn trade, do something, teach them how to weld, they'll teach them how to build, they'll teach them how to do concrete. And they help take care of the community. So it's a win-win for everybody. So I've seen on Facebook where, you know, little Johnny needs a job and stuff like that. Well, little Johnny can learn some skills and go get a job. And this is something our community offers that other communities don't. So it's just something that I really think we should make everyone aware, you know, tell a friend. And um, you know, just help these kids find a way to go. Not everybody's got to go to college. The other thing I would like to ask Bill to elaborate on, I know we don't normally cross-talk like this. The signs for the camera program. Could you elaborate on that for everybody so they can get their signs and we can go, here's your sign?
So yes, camera signs are available. Uh, you, I've noticed them popping up in the community. You can see uh, people uh, put them. It's kind of like having your house protected by ADT. It's a another form of deterrent for awareness, but anyone who signed up for it, you can go into the POA, they will give you a uh, a sign and uh, and a, and a stake to put it in the ground and uh, and you can proudly present it in your community and let your, let your neighbors know that you're uh, you're contributing to the safety of your, your community. So please, if you haven't done it already, go get them. They're free. All right, Joe, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I don't have much to say other than uh, uh, I've had four years on this board to work with, directly with Harmony. And I can't tell you how impressed I am about her contributions to the community. I know she's got another month here and we're going to go through this again. But I just, I just want to stress it tonight that um, uh, it's going to be a loss to our community, but it's wonderful for her and a good movement for her and her family. And we're happy for her for that. But um, her value to our community and her knowledge and experience are remarkable. So we're going to miss you about uh, Harmony and uh, we wish you well. Thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, I was gonna, I told the story earlier today, but I'm going to do it again because everybody's here and Zach, Zach is here also. I saw it on Facebook this morning. A resident commented about how their kids are getting coupons for being good kids e-biking. I personally know this person, so it kind of surprised me that she was actually on their Facebook commenting. Her two kids are on e-bikes 24/7. They're all over the community. They're always being good. They're always wearing helmets. They're not riding double. They're not speeding. And she made a comment that because her kids got that coupon for being, doing something good, that she felt her kids are part of the community and are a partnership with the, the patrol. And the community patrol and him, them have become friends. I think that's a huge movement um, in a direction of the relationship that what's going on here. Those kids are now going to be advocates for community patrol and to make things right and be better and just be safer out there. And I, I, I think that's just huge. And I would, Zach, great job. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I know it's hard sometimes to move this blimp. It doesn't turn very fast. But uh, this has been a long term. I mean, a year ago, we sat in this meeting in this room and pretty well got berated for e-bikes and drunk driving and you know, and so forth. So um, I feel like we've done a great job in a year. I feel like the, both community patrol and uh, the lake patrol and the community, you feel like there's a much more partnership in the whole program. So congrats to you guys. It's been really, really been good. On top of that, fall ball for fall, Little League is starting up. So there's going to be a lot of little kids around over there at that stop, stop sign at golf field. So make sure you're stopping over there. We are writing stop sign tickets. So just be aware. So don't be surprised uh, if you get, you're not stopping for stop signs. Um, and the last thing, Harbor Fest is coming up. Um, I have graciously uh, volunteered to sit in the dunk tank. So bring your money and try to dunk me so we can raise funds for the mermaids. So I'll see you guys there and uh, thank you guys for everything.
Thanks, Alex. Greg?
Yeah, there's an initiative going on that I don't think many people know about. So I'd like to give you a briefing on that. I went to a green committee meeting in Joe's place. He was busy uh, two or three months ago, and they were talking about this um, initiative that's actually going on nationwide at golf courses where they're um, trying to, especially on the West Coast, to uh, bring back the um, monarch butterflies. And the way you do that is you plant this weed called milkweed, which is what they feed on. And they will, on their flight south, they will stop at the milkweed and feed and breed and all that. So you have to give them a habitat. So they had some, uh, some passouts on it. And I took it home to my wife and I, and she said, oh, that's really cool. The next thing I know, we had 150 milkweed uh, plants uh, growing on, on our table outside on the patio. And sure enough, what's happened now is the first 55 plants were delivered to uh, John Kegwin, the uh, chairman of the green committee. And uh, next day, all 55 were promptly planted on between the 17th and 18th holes. I've seen a picture of that, but I don't know exactly where that is. I don't golf, but uh, and of course, we have another 100 plants growing in our, in our patio. So it's kind of cool because we're helping the butterflies and uh, uh, it's just, and the garden club got involved in this as well and in supporting that and giving us some ideas. So it's just one of those things that's going on and it shows how everybody can work together and do something really cool. So I thought I'd share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. While summer is winding down, um, activities aren't in Canyon Lake. If you haven't fun enough to do, there's still plenty going on. This weekend, we've got our big garage sale. I don't know how many garage people, it's usually a hundred or so people participating in garage sales. And that's a big event. Um, next Wednesday, I want to invite everyone down here for the nine 11 uh, ceremony that we have. Um, it is a, become a, a tradition in Canyon Lake for the last, I think, five years. So and um, and it's always a very good night. We've got some, a lot of activities planned and we encourage everyone to please come down uh, next Wednesday night. If you have a house and you can change the colors on your lights, um, I encourage everyone to turn them blue for this month because uh, in uh, in solidarity with, with our community honoring uh, honoring nine 11. And I want to commend Chuck Marino and the Bass Masters on uh, on the 14th. They've got the kids fishing derby, which is an awesome event. They get kids out there, whether they fish or not, they they all they can go out and, and fish and they get prizes. Uh, and it's a great community event. Um, and then obviously next month, we've got our board meeting, but I want everyone to get a heads up for the car show. Uh, October 5th. It's always a big, big thing. So lots of great things going on. The holidays will be here before we know it, but uh, but a lot of good things to do. So again, what makes Canyon Lake special is our community and all the people in it. And so encourage everyone to get involved and uh, and come on down. With that, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of ending this meeting at 7:03? Say aye.
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 Hearing five in favor. Most um, meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.